Okay. Welcome to the fortieth meeting of the Liquor Commission. We are in person today, so bear with us, audience. We're gonna go into the first agenda item on public hearings, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number two-one dash two-two-five-two-three from Kamalalu Market LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Hikia from Kamalalu Market LLC.
Ms. Wu, just you appearing today.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for Ms. Wu?
Yeah, I need to get something into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Harai.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application, and for the record, a summary of the April first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for Ms. Wu?
Motion to approve transfer application number two-one dash two-two-five-two-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve transfer application number two-one dash two-two-five-two-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I also vote aye, motion carried. Transfer application is approved, thank you, Ms. Wu. Oh, you have number two as well, okay, calling agenda item number two, transfer application number two-one dash two-two-six-five-one from NGN eleven-twenty-six LLC, Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Hikia Wu, behalf of NGN eleven-twenty-six LLC. The business says NGN eleven-twenty-six LLC, also in, uh, the applicant, the company now, is also, uh, care for the joining meeting rules of application.
Thank you, Ms. Wu, Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for this submission of this application, and for the record, a summary of the April first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Min prior to the public hearing.
Commissioners, any questions, comments for Ms. Wu?
Seeing none, motion to approve transfer application number two-one dash two-two-six-five-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve transfer application number two-one dash two-two-six-five-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Aye.
Sorry? I also vote aye, motion carried. The application has been approved, thank you. Okay, squeaky wheel, guys, squeaky wheel, we're getting, we're getting here. Okay, calling agenda item number three, transfer application number two-zero dash two-one-nine-zero-five from TBB Holdings Incorporated, Mr. Zebakalan.
Well, Chair Vice Chair Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Uwam, here on behalf of TBB Holdings Inc., as authorized agent. Um, I, I did know, I did wanna point out to the Commission that, um, the reason for this transfer was, um, primarily a corporate restructuring. Uh, we were moving from one entity to another entity, so it isn't like we're changing owners or, you know, any of the establishment practices are changing. I did notice that, um, there was, you know, some concern, uh, at least one concern from the community, and I wanted to address that to make sure that, um, the Commission knows that we're keeping everything status quo, uh, we won't be, you know, expanding hours or anything like that. Uh, we just want to make sure that our entity structure is appropriate moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zebakalan. Um, Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received one written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Commissioners, any questions or comments from Mr. Zebakalan?
I do have a question, Mr. Zebakalan, have you or your client made any effort to reach out to the gentleman who submitted the letter of protest?
Um, we did not, uh, for two reasons, one, we received it only a few days ago, and, and two, um, generally when it comes to these issues, um, unless we're dealing with a specific issue, um, that we can approach the individual for where it won't be considered as hostile, uh, we, we tend not to engage directly with individuals, uh, just to make sure that we're compliant to all the rules, uh, and statutes that the Honolulu Liquor Commission has.
Okay, um, and I know some of the complaints are general concerns, have you or your client heard of these concerns while they have been operating?
Um, there, there's always, um, some concern about noise, and we've taken steps to address that in the past. Uh, we always make sure that, you know, when ten o'clock hits, um, we make sure that everything's indoors and, um, there's, the door's actually closed so that there's not music going on into the neighborhood. Um, and we understand there's concerns about the activity in the general area, um, and so we've, uh, trained our staff to make sure that, uh, when, when sales are happening, there's never overintoxication, and when people do leave the premise, um, they're, at least on their best behavior going out, um, so that we don't agitate any of the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zebakalan, um, I do recall this application when it originally came up way back when, and just a reminder that we did place conditions on this original license. Even though it's a corporate restructure, just make sure that they adhere to the, um, the conditions. Okay.
If there's nothing further, um, motion to approve application number two-zero dash two-one-nine-zero-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-zero dash two-one-nine-zero-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved, thank you, Mr. Zebakalan.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Calling agenda item number four, application number two-one dash two-one-nine-nine-seven from Chinatown Hoben LLC, Mr. Lu.
Good afternoon, uh, tomorrow night, Jasmine Marcos, she is a member and sole owner of the applicant, uh, applicant LLC. We have no changes to the last year's report, she has been operating under temporary license since the first week in March, and so far, no problems.
Thank you, Mr. Lu. Ms. Harai.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received one written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Commissioners, any questions or comments from Mr. Lu or his client?
Um, yes, uh, so, Mr. Lu, this floor plan includes a small outdoor area, I remember licensing it for the previous owner. Um, but there has been issues with, um, the licensee's inability to control the alcohol consumption in the outdoor area and keeping it within the licensed premises and not bleeding out into the alleyway. Can your client please comment on how she plans on controlling that area? You guys aren't new.
He's frozen.
He's frozen.
Oh, he's frozen. Wait a little while?
Or are we frozen?
No, that would be me doing at home and at work.
Okay, how do we wanna handle this?
Since we are experiencing technical difficulties, and it looks like Mr. Lu just signed off.
He'll probably try to log back on. Do we wanna move this and then pick up the next agenda item, or we wanna wait a little while?
Um, we'll, we'll let, we'll let him remedy his technical difficulty side of it, and we'll just move on and revisit agenda item number four. So we'll call, um, agenda item number five, application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-eight from Right and Sideways LLC. Mr. Leon.
My good afternoon, Commissioner, my name's Eric Leon, representing Right and Sideways LLC, DBA, chronic tacos, Kaffa Hulu, uh, for the application of a general license requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Leon, um, Ms. Harai.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Commissioners, any questions or comment, um, or concerns for Mr. Leon?
Hearing none, motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-eight. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved. Do we have? Thank you, Mr. Leon, do we have Mr. Lu back? No? Okay, moving on, let's go to, um, special license applications, agenda item number six, application number two-one dash two-two-nine-seven-one from Bamboo Catering Incorporated, Mr. Webb. Are you there?
There he is.
Hello, Mr. Webb.
Hello, David Webb, authorized agent, Bamboo Catering.
And this is for special license from Mother's Day Dinner on May eighth, yeah?
Yes, the Saturday before Mother's Day.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Uh, motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-nine-seven-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-two-nine-seven-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you very much.
Okay, calling agenda item number seven, application number two-one dash two-two-one-four-one from TH Kahala LLC.
Hi there, you have Don Hunt, an authorized agent for TH Kahala LLC.
And is it Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Please introduce the gentleman next to you as well. I'm sorry, go ahead, one more time.
Yeah, Keegan Kanarium, uh, for TH Kahala LLC. Gustavando for TH Kahala LLC.
Okay.
Might have mislabeled.
Yep, might have mislabeled.
Yeah, that's okay.
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 Um, Ms. Hunt, I do have a, a comment for you, were you able to, um, read the investigative report? The issues raised? And if you have any comments on that?
Yes, we have it.
Um, were you able to, um, uh, read page number four, um, which our investigator listed some issues in regards to your licensing? If you could comment, comment on that for us, that would be great.
Okay, so, were there any questions?
The, one of the areas I had a concern with was the independent business, um, sublease of the other spaces within your floor plan. Not sure how those spaces were, the subleases were gonna operate all of those spaces? Whether you would have even control over those spaces, uh, because it was part of your licensed premise?
Yeah, correct, um, we don't sublease the spaces and maintain full control of those three spaces that are there. We do maintain full control of those spaces at all times.
So, you're saying that if there is a business in there and decide, they decide to lock their doors, you would be able to let our investigators in if needed?
Of course, yes, at all times. Yeah, we, we, uh, we are, uh, the other business we are in is in, uh, shared office space, so we, we have complete control of all of our spaces.
My second concern, uh, thanks for, um, answering that, my second concern was for the outdoor area. I saw that you have some sanctions or, or signage posted, um, it looks like a pretty open area adjacent to the sidewalk. Were there any plans to put any other delineation between, um, by those areas besides a line on the ground?
Uh, yes, uh, there is. Um, yes, there, there's a, uh, uh, tall railing that's there, and those, uh, and then there's two, uh, areas for, uh, ingress and egress that will be roped off.
Okay, and you have two entrances, correct? I mean, two, we have a frontage from the parking lot, that's an outdoor area and a, an area adjacent to the sidewalk?
Oh.
Yes, so the area next to the parking lot will also, um, have four-foot climbers separating the, um, area from the parking lot, the main area from the parking lot.
If I may, um, I'm also concerned with these multiple, I guess, office spaces, they're labeled as office or souvenir shop on your floor plan, so this seems like a, I mean, the only analogy I can think of right now in terms of licensed areas is like a karaoke room, like, you know, bar where they have separate karaoke rooms, so, um, and these are all gonna be subleased or rented out to tenants?
No, they get used during the day by our, by our, uh, members, but, uh, by, yeah, the evening, the, the vision is it's maybe similar to workplace, where you could have a private room, uh, and, and be served at that private room.
Okay, and do you folks have any interior pictures of what these rooms look like? What the doors are like, because, um, there's rules about closed areas in licensed premises, so how do you, how do you folks intend to manage this? This seems very, um, difficult to manage from a, uh, from a liquor standpoint.
Um, so, the three, so currently one is the salon, and the other are two private offices, so, um, it would only be, people would only be able to purchase beverages at the bar during operating bar hours, and so, an example of the salon would be if her client is there getting her hair done, she would be able to purchase a drink only at the bar, and then able to drink her drink in the salon. Um, another example, um, yeah.
And so the, I guess, the salon owner or the salon's employees, um, you understand that you folks will be liable for their conduct, because
Yes.
they will be working within the licensed premises, and if they do something that violates the laws or rules, you'll be liable for that, you understand that?
Yes.
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 And, um, as Commissioner Lee said, and I would like you folks to confirm again for the record, that when our investigators come, they're, they're going to have access to the entire licensed premises and all areas within the licensed premises, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other question?
Okay. Any other, um, questions or comments for the applicant?
Uh, motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
They moved in second to convene into executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, we are now in executive session. Okay, we are back from executive session, we're gonna recall the agenda item number seven, application number two-one dash two-two-one-four-one from TH Kahala LLC. Ms. Hunt, are you there still? Yes, you are. Okay. Okay.
Um, uh, we have, we have some concerns about the indoor spaces, as we expressed earlier, and how those are gonna be managed, and how those individual tenants and their employees are going to be managed. Um, we're also concerned with the requested outdoor areas, um, I'm looking at a picture or a street view of the building right now, and there doesn't appear to be any delineation between the outdoor area you requesting and the city sidewalk, which is an issue for me.
Is it the blue in that photo?
I'm sorry?
Is the, um, photo you're looking at a blue building or a black building?
It is a white building.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Um, we're at the building now, if you.
No, so what, what, hi, guys, just for the interest of time, what we wanna do is continue this, um, so that you folks can provide the Commission with some outdoor and internal photographs of the proposed space so that we can get a better and clear view of what you folks are actually proposing. We'd also like to see a business plan or some sort of flow chart of how the operations are gonna be conducted in the interest of adhering to the liquor laws and rules of the city and county of Honolulu. You know, the, the investigator in, in the report highlighted some areas within the statute, HRS two-eighty-one, that the, the Commission does not like to waive statutes for, for, for no reason, so it clearly states that, I'm sorry, let me find it again. Independent businesses not related to the applicant's own business, so that would be tenants, so I, that's why we want to see how you folks intend to, um, adhere to the rules and statute and manage this, uh, new business concept, 'cause this is new for us, so, um, uh, and if the commissioners have any other concerns, they can voice them now before I make the motion to continue.
Yeah, if I can chime in, um, my concern is I don't see any experience with liquor, and we can't tell you to hire a consultant, but it might be useful that you consider that. Again, we can't tell you to what to do, but given the lack of experience, I wanna make sure you folks do understand the privilege of holding a license comes with a lot of obligations, and we wanna make sure you folks do it properly.
So we have, we have a consultant already, who's been in the industry for maybe thirty years.
Okay, very good.
You know what?
Yeah, perhaps you can, um, take these concerns back to your consultant, and they can help you prepare for, uh, the next hearing, we do wanna see a lot more information about how this, uh, premises and how this business is going to be managed.
Okay.
If there's nothing further, Commissioners, uh, motion to continue, agenda item number seven, application number two-one dash two-two-one-four-one, uh, is one week enough?
Yes.
For one week?
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue, agenda item number seven, application number two-one dash two-two-one-four-one for one week, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, we will see you back here in one week, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, we're gonna recall, um, agenda item number four, um, I believe Mr. Lu is back online. Okay, so we're gonna recall, agenda item number four, application number two-one dash two-one-nine-nine-seven from Chinatown Hoben LLC. Mr. Lu.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, I went, when did you know what, uh, the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Lu, before we had technical difficulties, I was asking your client, um, how she intends to, uh, contain and manage the outdoor licensed area and keep, uh, it from going out into the alley.
Great, uh, so I understand that the, uh, because we've been seeing how the house issues with that, so what if we got it added additional staffing, we had a host who sits out there, um, like right on our patio area to, to keep an eye on guests, to make sure that they understand where the patio, where it is posed, and, you know, they have to keep all of their beverages on the patio additionally on Friday or Saturday nights, uh, traditionally our busiest nights, new added security to also help enforce that.
Okay, thank you, um, and, uh, I'm not sure if the previous, uh, licensee had, um, licensed the mezzanine area, but you folks are requesting the mezzanine area to be licensed as well, correct?
Uh, just licensed, I didn't, it's part of the permit.
Okay, what is that mezzanine space going to be used for?
I'm sorry, you broke out.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, the mezzanine space, what is it going to be used for? Is that going to be a service area?
No, uh, just storage.
Okay, all right, thank you. I have nothing further, Commissioner.
I, I do have, uh, one more question, um, you mentioned you hired extra, um, employees to monitor the outdoors, if you could go over, you know, with us how you, um, how that area was gonna be delineated as well, um, you know, separated? So.
I'm sorry, the connection is bad, can you repeat that for me?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, very well, thank you.
So, um, you mentioned you hired, um, additional employees to monitor the outdoor area and to, um, make your, your clients aware of, you know, where your licensed premise stops and ends. Could you elaborate on how, what that area, um, looks like? Do you have planners out there separating, um, or does it end in the place?
On both sides. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, yep, on both sides we have, um, barriers. On one side it's a stainless steel barrier, and on the other side you have two posts with a chain with lights on it, um, and there's a fence behind as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other concerns or comments for Mr. Lu or his client?
Uh, motion to approve application number two-one dash two-one-nine-nine-seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-one-nine-nine-seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, uh, application is approved, thank you, Mr. Lu.
Thank you so much.
Okay, going back on the, um, regular agenda, we are on agenda item number eight, application number two-one dash two-two-four-one-one from TBB Holdings Incorporated, Mr. Zebakalan.
Chair Vice Chair Members of the Commission, Emmanuel Zebakalan, here on behalf of TBB Holdings Inc., uh, I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Zebakalan?
Hearing none, motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-four-one-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two-one dash two-two-four-one-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved, thank you, Mr. Zebakalan.
Any questions, I'll answer any of them.
Me too. Uh, calling agenda item number nine, application number two-one dash two-two-eight-seven-five from Volcano, Volcano Skewer House LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the Commission, great to share our authorized agent, Karen. Also online is Zenbo, that's Z-H-E-N-B-O-U-L-I-U, also known as Rebecca. Also online is Zenbo, that's Z H E N B O L I U, also known as Rebecca R E E C C A D U L I U, who is the member manager of the applicant. We have received the, uh, investigator, Tamalhuas, report. We have no additions and changes at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Nishiyoka. Uh, commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Nishiyoka or his client?
Hearing none, motion to approve application number two one dash two two eight seven five.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two two eight seven five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Nishiyoka.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission.
Calling agenda item number ten, application number two one dash two three zero two seven from J and E Capital Investment Group LLC.
Aloha, my name is Jordan Kakalia. First name is J O R D A N, last name is K A K A L I A. I'm here as a member manager of J and E Capital Investment Group. We're doing business as the cut three. We're coming before the Commission to humbly ask for your consideration of agenda item number ten regarding if we passed for our approval of our standalone temporary license application. We have no contest or comments to add to the investigative report, although we are open to any questions or comments that the Commission may have for us.
Thank you, Ms. Kakalia. Kakalia.
Thank you.
Um, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Uh, motion to approve application number two one dash two three zero two seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two three zero two seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, application is approved. Thank you, Ms. Kakalia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, calling, um, we're now moving into the request section, calling agenda item number eleven. Request number two zero dash two one nine one eight from CMK Group LLC.
Hello, Commissioners, this is Mark Ushijima, member of CMK Group.
Thank you, Mr. Ushijima. Commissioners, any questions or comments for the applicant?
Uh, motion to approve request number two zero dash two one nine one eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two zero dash two one nine one eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, the request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Ushijima.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, calling agenda item number twelve, request number two one dash two two one eight three from Cantina LLC.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hello, Commission, uh, my name is Daniel Kai Li, the managing member of Cantina LLC.
And Mr. Kai Li, you folks are proposing to delete the, the daily burger space from your premises?
Correct. Uh, we are, uh, actively attempting to get a liquor license for that business. It's a separate business and a, and a five LLC. Um, and we were hoping in a perfect world that we would be able to, uh, end the extension on one business day and, uh, start, uh, assuming we weren't able to receive a new liquor license for that business, uh, and then start operating the next day under that new license. The investigator, uh, told me that, uh, the, I guess the process is that first we would have to do the permanent extension uh, before we, we could apply for the new license. So I was hoping that maybe we could consolidate the hearing so that they could both kinda be taken in context and, and, uh, there wouldn't be an interruption in, in the service that we offer.
Um, Mr. Kalali, I'm sorry, we're not able to entertain that request. It's not agendoned that way. So unfortunately, we can only act upon what your request is that's been put before us, which is the deletion. Um, so the deletion portion that you're requesting. So we'll take action on that.
And if you have questions, um, like you just, um, stated, you can always come and talk to the, um, the administration here. The clerks are very helpful, so you can call in or email and they might be able to help you with some of that continuity issue. Um.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments, commissioners? Uh, motion to approve request number two one dash two two one eight three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two one eight three. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, your request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Kalali.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirteen, request number two one dash two two three zero three from Brick Fire Tavern Kamoki LLC. Do we have anyone appearing for agenda item number thirteen? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and, uh, move this to the end of the agenda and recall again to see if anyone is present. Okay, moving to agenda item number fourteen, request number two one dash two two four seven nine from Black Angus Steakhouse LLC.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Who?
Vice Chair and Commission Member is Kenneth Loebert for the licensee. And also appearing is Daniel Tobis. He's the general manager of the, uh, of the licensee. This is an application for change in, uh, managers and members, um, all of which were caused by the restructuring of the company due to the pandemic. If you look at the report, you see that all of these changes occurred in less than two months, but were all reported, uh, to the Commission prior to the end of the amnesty program.
Thank you, Mr. Who. I'm sorry, but we don't have the spelling of, um, the gentleman, Daniel, the last name, I believe.
I'm sorry, uh, Daniel Tobis, last name spelled T O V E S.
Thank you, Mr. Who. Okay, commissioners, any questions, comments for Mr. Who?
Motion to approve request number two one dash two two four seven nine.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two four seven nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I also vote aye, motion carried, uh, request is approved, Mr. Who. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number fifteen, request number two one dash two two seven three three from the firm LLC, Ms. Cole.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and we call on behalf of the licensee, person who might latch to is Mr. Keita Yamamoto. He's one of the owners of Enu LLC, I'm sorry, the firm LLC, who is listed as Enu Island LLC. With regards to the investment being reported, we just like to make one correction where it says, uh, Enu LLC is not even standing. Uh, we did file the annual report, so, uh, we did make that correction and we did cure it. So now the Enu LLC is not even standing. We have no further changes to the list.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. I'm sorry, I don't think we have the spelling for your client as well.
Keita, it's got K E I T A, last name is Yamamoto, Y A M A M O T O.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is just basically restructuring of the, uh, the companies in order to provide employees with some stock options. So we're preparing to allow the employees to get some sort of ownership compensation for their services.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments for Ms. Cole?
Motion to approve request number two one dash two two seven three three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two seven three three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I also vote aye, motion carried, the request is approved, Ms. Cole. Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number sixteen, request number two one dash two two nine four eight from Ko'olau Spirits LLC. Mr. Dill?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Aloha, Commissioner, Mr. Dill, owner and CEO of Ko'olau Spirits, who business is Ko'olau Distillery. Uh, we have no comments to add to Inspector's subject.
Thank you, Mr. Dill. Commissioners, any questions, comments for Mr. Dill?
Mr. Dill, um, the investigator pointed out that the extension will exceed fifty percent of total current square footage if the, of the current licensed premises. I'm on page two of the investigative licensing report.
Yes, ma'am. I think with that, uh, with that, uh, if you exceed fifty, you have to notify the, uh, neighborhood which we did and we provided a certified copy of the receipt of the letter, uh, of the letter that we submitted to the neighborhood when you exceed more than fifty feet, or fifty percent of it.
Okay. So it looks as if you guys are taking over the neighboring space, is that correct?
That's correct. We will be moving on today and we'll be opening a, um, opening between them. So it'll be an extension of the current space that we're in.
Okay, is that already been done or you folks are planning to do that?
No, we, we, uh, uh, when the inspector came out and did his review, uh, we are waiting for the approval of this evening and then it will be actually probably done tomorrow or for this weekend.
Okay. All right, motion to approve request number two one dash two two nine four eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two nine four eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, request is approved, Mr. Dill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was good to see you then.
You too, good luck. Okay, calling agenda item number seventeen, request number two one dash two three zero two eight from the Susan G. Coleman Hawaii, Ms. Rolando Morgan.
Good afternoon, um, Madam, uh, Chair and Commissioners, I'm Rolando Morgan, Executive Director of Susan G. Coleman Hawaii. Be happy to answer any questions regarding our, um, application for license.
Ms. Morgan, this is just for online, um, it's an online auction, right? Or silent auction?
Yes, it's the first, yes, um, it's the first time we've, um, um, had to apply, um, to give time for, uh, winners to, um, come to, uh, pick up from our office with our online auction.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve request number two one dash two three zero two eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two three zero two eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, request is approved. Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Aloha.
Thank you. Okay, um, calling agenda item number eighteen, request number two one dash two three zero three four, um, Mr. Luke.
Commander, I can just like Wayne Duke, as a request there.
Any questions, commissioners? Motion to approve request number two one dash two three zero three four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two three zero three four. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, request is approved, Mr. Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna recall agenda item number thirteen, um, calling, uh, request number two one two two three zero three from Brick Fire Tavern Kamoki LLC. Any?
Yeah, there he is.
He's present?
Yeah, Matthew Resich.
Okay.
Hi, apologies for my tardiness.
You caught us just in time.
Yeah, so sorry. Thank you for patience.
Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. Res- Resich?
Yeah, if you could just intro- uh, make your appearance, uh, just state your name for the record, please.
Oh, hi, Matthew Resich with Brick Fire Tavern and Key LLC.
All right, motion to approve request number two one dash two two three zero three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two three zero three. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, request is approved. Thank you, Mr. Resich.
Thank you very much, and again, apologies.
No problem.
No problem. Thank you.
Chair, motion for the adoption of findings of fact and decision in order for agenda items nineteen through twenty-four inclusive.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, um, uh, to adopt the adoption of findings of fact and decision in order for agenda items nineteen through twenty-four as previously circulated. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Okay, we're going into the adjudication portion. We'll be calling agenda item, I'm sorry, who is that, Ms. Ogata?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, Members of the Commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel, Pedro Ogata.
Thank you, Ms. Ogata. We're going into agenda item number twenty-five, Blue Tropics Bar and Grill.
Good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, for the licensee, we waive reading of the charge and are a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata.
This is the second violation of this type. First violation occurred in two thousand seventeen. Recommended fine is seven hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Keuchi, what's going on?
Yeah, this was, um, the, the reason why they failed to provide it, this was only the catering sales that they failed to provide. So I had to go back and drill down because the, uh, investigator report didn't indicate what it was for. And apparently, this was for a very brief period of time. There was a sixty-day period when they had a catering license approved for the Emma Suites Hotel. And if the Commissioner recalls, initially there was a, him, there was a catering request for food approved that was converted to a special license. But, uh, when I talked to Mr. Sukio, we don't think it was for an extended period of time. It's certainly not more than sixty days, but it's a much shorter period of time. But that's what happened. They didn't have the records for that catering and that's why the violation was on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, the fee of seven hundred fifty dollars is imposed. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Fortune Foods Hawaii Incorporated. I'm sorry, Seafood City Supermarkets, I'm sorry.
Hi, good afternoon, Shu Byoki appearing on behalf of the licensee, uh, to, uh, also appearing with me virtually is Mr. Victor Lee, who is, uh, licensee's outside accountant. Um, we will, we reading of the charges and, uh, licensee is prepared to plead no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata.
This is a second violation of this type. The recommended fine is seven hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Okie.
Yes, um, Mr. Victor Lee is here, who's, uh, very familiar with the accounting procedures in the POS system, uh, who's able to explain what has happened. Uh, Mr. Lee, are you available?
Hi, uh, this is Victor Lee, uh, the CPA for, um, Seafood City Supermarket. The client, uh, is, has hired us and, uh, POS consultant to look into the POS, POS system, to make sure that the system is recording their liquor sales correctly and to make sure that in the future they will be reporting their liquor sales to the Commission, uh, actively.
Okay, thank you. And has an accurate gross liquor sales report been submitted to the Commission? For this, I'm seeing this a fiscal year ending twenty nineteen and we're in twenty twenty-one. So, um, what has happened in that, in that time?
Uh, yes, ma'am, an amended report for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen has been filed. Um, and I, I believe that has been approved. The twenty twenty fiscal year has been, uh, filed and I believe the licensee is currently working with, uh, Mr. Lee as well as the Commission, the, uh, I believe the auditor, uh, auditor to, uh, make sure that the filing, you know, reflects the, uh, correct numbers.
Okay, thank you very much. It sounds like you folks are on top of correcting this. Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of. It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred fifty dollars for agenda item number twenty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. The fee of seven hundred fifty dollars is imposed.
Thank you, Mr. Oki. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Ohana Karaoke Two, at, and barbecue.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Um, this is Keith Inagaki from Ohana Karaoke Barbecue, uh, Ohana Two Barbecue Grill. Um, I'm sorry, did you say Ohana Two Barbecue, Inagaki Inc.?
Thank you, Ms. Ogata.
Honor, honor during the period ended June thirty, two thousand nineteen, the City and County of Honolulu State of Hawaii licensee failed to meet the requirement that at least thirty percent of its gross revenue come from the sale of foods in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point two-two subsection B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Mr. Inagaki, how would you like to plead?
Uh, do you like to plead no contest?
Okay, thank you. A motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty-seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata.
This is a first time violation of this type. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars. Um, I'm also going to be requesting that this licensee return in six months, uh, to work with our auditing staff, um, if necessary to, uh, check on the status of their food sales.
Okay, Mr. Inagaki, um, why don't you let us know what's going on?
Um. This has been a, I guess it's a problem that we've been trying to correct for some time. Um, we've tried many, many things to alter the venue, uh, change the concept, um. This is not a deterrent that we will not continue to do so until we get that portion right. But I just, we asked for leniency and, um, this, but this has been an issue that we have, um, been trying to, uh, make better.
Okay, thank you. Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars and licensee will work with the administration and the prosecutor to, uh, to meet its requirement of thirty percent of gross liquor rev- gross revenue coming from food.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars and the conditions imposed in Vice Chairman's motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Inagaki.
Thank you, Representative Commissioner. Okay, any more?
You too.
Okay, calling agenda item number twenty-eight, Pandora Cafe Karaoke Bar and Grill. Mr. Kuchi.
Yes, good afternoon. Yeah, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kuchi for the licensee. Also present online is Lynn Agno. As to charge twenty-eight, waif reading of the charge, we're gonna deny the charges. Like it to be set for adjudication hearing. This may not go to adjudication hearing, but, um, the accountant for the licensee, Arnold Green, is actually very sick right now. So I'd ask it be scheduled at the same time as agenda item twenty-nine.
Okay, so you are requesting a contested, a contested adjudication?
An adjudication. Yes.
Um, I don't, did you want a date certain, or no?
Um, I'll work, I'll work with the, um, administration on a date primarily because for twenty-nine, we're gonna have a witness, so I'm gonna have to check the availability of witnesses.
Ms. Ogata, any objection?
No, I have no objection.
Okay.
Next, Rell.
Uh, motion to continue agenda item number twenty-eight, Pandora Cafe Karaoke, uh, for contested adjudication the next available date.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, um, to move, to continue agenda item twenty-eight for a contested hearing for the next available date. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Okay, calling agenda item twenty-nine, Pandora Cafe.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Keith Kuchi representing the licensee, also online is Lynn, Lynn Agno, the licensee. As to, uh, agenda item number twenty-nine, we waive reading of the charge, deny all three charges. Ask it be set for contested adjudication hearing.
Okay. Uh, motion to continue agenda item number twenty-nine, uh, for contested adjudication the next available date.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-nine for contested hearing for the next available date. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Mr. Kuchi, before you leave, um, I had, um, informed you and Ms. Ogata in other contested matters that we do have certain disclosure requirements. Would you like us to go through that again?
No, I think, um, I don't think that's necessary. Ms. Ogata and I have been, uh, following those requirements for, um, contested cases, so thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mishiknyashio for reminding me of that.
Okay, moving on. We are moving to agenda item number thirty, XO Restaurants.
Judy Lee.
Judy Lee.
Yeah.
Ms. Lee, are you appearing for agenda item number thirty? Are you there? Yep. Okay, well, we call this, um, agenda item at the end. Moving on, calling agenda item number thirty-one, Brood. Anyone appearing for agenda? Oh, there we go. Yep. Thirty-one, yep. Hello, sir.
Hello.
Go ahead and identify yourself for the record.
Uh, my name is Karen Inoy.
On or about May three, two thousand nineteen through May twenty-nine, two thousand nineteen, in the City and County of Honolulu State of Hawaii licensee purchased or acquired the fare from any person, uh, other than a wholesaler licensed pursuant to section two eighty-one dash thirty-one of Hawaii Statute for purposes of resale and in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-one subsection T of the Hawaii Statute.
Mr. Inoy, how would you like to plead?
I'm guilty.
You're gonna accept the charges? Accept the violation?
It was out of desperation. It was just.
One, one second, sir. One second, sir. Let me, um, go through the motion. Uh, uh, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the plea for agenda item number thirty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Inoy.
Uh, it was just out of desperation, you know. It was the first time, um, learned my lesson. Never, never did this before. It was just a desperate thing. It was a Friday, it was a Friday night. I remember this. And I just purchased a, a pair of was not on peach tops. You know, it was a stupid mistake and, you know, I, I, it was my first time. I never did it before or did it after. It's just a foolish mistake. Because I didn't want a eighty-six, uh, a Friday night special, uh, I remember that. Rather now, just instead of going through this, just eighty-six, I don't know. I thought, uh, never mind about the money to be made for the, for the, for the, um.
I appreciate your honesty. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ogata, what's your recommendation?
This is a first time violation of this type. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Right, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the, uh, recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. The fee of, the fine of five hundred dollars is imposed. Thank you, Mr. Inoy.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda number thirty-two fifty-three by the sea.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Niogota, appearing on behalf of sixty-three by the sea. Appearing with me is Tony Castillo, that's spelled C.A.S.T.I.L.L.O. He's the general manager. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata.
This is the first violation of this type. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Gotta.
Uh, yes, uh, this is situations where liquor was purchased from retailers for staff parties and staff meetings. None of the liquor was sold, uh, to customers. Again, however, licensee understands the rules, uh, staff have been retrained and this should not happen again.
Thank you. A motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor? Wait. No, wait, it's been moved in second, it's like, it's been moved in second to accept the, to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number thirty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. The fee of five hundred dollars is imposed. Thank you, Mr. Gotta.
Thank you, Mr. Gotta.
Thank you.
Almost there.
We're almost there. Pushing through. Okay, calling agenda item number thirty-three, Taps and Apps. Anyone appearing for agenda item number thirty-three, Taps and Apps? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move it to the, almost to the end of the agenda. We'll move on. Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Hawaii Theater Center.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Members of the Commission, Kuchi on behalf of the licensee Hawaii Theater Center. Also appearing, uh, with me is Gregory Dunn, D.U.N.N. Just checking, I saw him earlier. Oh, there he is, okay. We plead, uh, no contest to the charge and waive reading of the charge. Thank you.
And, um. Right, motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number thirty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata.
This is a first violation of this type. Recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Mr. Chu.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, unfortunately, um, this is a nonprofit, uh, Hawaii Theater Center that's been actually closed under COVID and they're doing, uh, limited, uh, events online. They have learned from this, um, this event that, uh, they need to file, uh, any change in directors within thirty days. In fact, this week, uh, there was a change that was, that occurred, um, this month and they did file it, uh, within the thirty days. So, uh, we don't expect another violation and we just, um, hope that we go softly on this. Thank you.
Um. Mr. Chu, um, Hawaii Theater is a institution here. How long has Hawaii Theater been in operation?
I, I would defer that to, uh, Mr. Dunn. I, I, I know it's a long time. Um, I've only been a member a few years, but I know that they do a lot of good things in the community. The board members are all volunteer board members. And, um, I don't think they intended to violate the law. I think it was just an oversight on your part. And if you have any questions with Mr. Dunn, I'm sure you can.
Yes, Mr. Dunn, um, how long has Hawaii Theater been in operation here?
Uh, as a nonprofit, uh, we opened in nineteen ninety-six. So, um, almost thirty years we've, we've been a nonprofit. The theater itself has been a staple in the community for almost a hundred years. We'll be celebrating a hundred years of our existence in, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, as Mr. Chu stated, we've been closed, uh, to the public for the last year and based on what the city tells us, uh, will be closed at least through September or October. Um, I, I really appreciate your consideration and, and taking into account that during this, this period, the, um, that this oversight had occurred. Uh, we were in the middle of a staff transition and we believed that our office manager attempted to use US Postal Service to mail the changed documents into the Liquor Commission. Uh, and, uh, the documents were returned to us or got lost in the mail, one of the two. Um, we've since signed up to file our documents online. And, uh, we, you know, plead for mercy of the Liquor Commission that, that you would, you would consider giving us a second chance. Um, not being close to the public, we're, uh, really financially strapped right now.
How long have you folks been closed? When was the last show there?
The last show was February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty.
Thank you. My motion is to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
It's been moved in second to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item number thirty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. A letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Thank you, Mr. Chu. We look forward to seeing the theater open again.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-five, Hibiscus Club. Mr. Koata.
Here.
You need to unmute.
There we go. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. It's been a while. Okay, uh, am I working now?
Yes.
Yeah, I should be. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, Madam Commissioner and Commissioner Mark Koata, I represent, um, I believe it's WCDL Ventures LLC, the Hibiscus Club. Um, at this time, we waive reading of the charge, uh, enter a denial, ask for a, uh, adjudication hearing. I would like to see the discovery if there's a possibility of, of course, working this out.
Okay. Um, Ms. Ogata, do you have any objections?
I have no objection, um, but if Mr. Koata would like a date certain, I think the next open date that we have for adjudication hearings is July eighth.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Koata?
One second. I have a trial session in the line. Let me make sure it's. I can do July eighth. Thank you.
Okay. All right, motion to continue agenda item number thirty-five for contested adjudication on July eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to, um, continue agenda item thirty-five for a contested hearing on July eighth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Koata.
Okay, one more, Mr. Koata. Calling agenda item number thirty-six, Hibiscus Club.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Chairwoman and Members of the Commission, Mark Koata for WCDL Ventures LLC, the Hibiscus Club. We waive reading of charges, um, all five counts, enter a denial, ask for a contested unit date. If we could get the same date, I think, as long as, if, if there's sufficient time to handle all of them, I think, it's probably better for all parts.
Ms. Ogata, what, what's your pleasure?
I have a, uh, I have no objection to considering to the same date.
Okay. Motion to continue agenda item number thirty-six for a contested hearing on July eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number thirty-six for a contested hearing on July eighth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Koata.
If you're announced, be honest.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Koata, hold on one second. Um, are you familiar with our new, um, uh, procedures, um, going forward with, uh, contested hearings?
Actually not, so I would invite, um, Commissioner Yenture to.
Yes, please. Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Oh, my God.
Mr. Koata, um, since you have pled guilty, um, I'm sorry, pled not guilty on behalf of your client on the two matters and wish to return for contested hearing, there are a few procedures we require you to follow. First, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Number two, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the. Number two, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Again, witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Excuse me. Third, because we are proceeding, at least at this juncture with remote adjudication hearings, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive by fa- excuse me, four o'clock P.M. on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how you can accomplish that will be provided to the parties and available on the commission's website shortly. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to Google Drive, please be sure to let both the liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information. Do you understand our disclosure requirements, Mr. Kawata?
Yes, it sounds very much like court.
Excellent, and Ms. Paige.
It's turning out like court.
We're, we're trying to.
It's fine, it's fine, I think that's fair.
Sure, and we want to make sure it's a fair process, Ms. Ogata, do you have any questions?
I have no question, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kawata.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, calling, and next agenda item number thirty-seven, Club venue. Mr. Kiu Chi.
Good afternoon again, and chair members of the commission, Kiu Chi for the licensee. As to all four charges, we waive reading of the charge and a plea of no contest on all four charges.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charges one, two, three, and four.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for charges one, two, three, and four, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata, uh, let's go through these one by one, what's your recommendation for charge one?
Charge one, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
And charge two?
Five hundred dollars.
Charge three?
Three hundred fifty dollars.
And charge four?
Seven hundred fifty dollars, for a total of two thousand one hundred dollars.
All right, Mr. Kiu Chi, you're up.
This was, this was a situation of a dancer who did all of this on her first day on the job and didn't work at venue again. Yeah, so, which explains the registration, which explains the time card, but Ms. Im is not happy at all that she even hired this woman even for a day because this has resulted in the violations. Ms. Im does not approve of something like this, apparently dancer didn't realize that. Uh, she wants me to apologize to the commission that this occurred. She does not like this kind of conduct happening in the place, so. We think it's an outlier and obviously she ain't part of the area.
Was your, was your client on the premises on March eighth, two thousand twenty?
She said she was not.
So this was a, there was a manager there?
There was a manager there.
Okay.
She didn't find out about this till she got the citation, she got the citation, she was.
Okay. All right, uh, motion to approve the recommended fines of five hundred dollars for charge one, five hundred dollars for charge two, three hundred fifty dollars for charge three, and seven hundred fifty dollars for charge four, for a total of two thousand one hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the recommended, the recommended penalty amounts as outlined in vice chairman's motion for a total of twenty-one hundred dollars, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, thank you, Mr. Kiu Chi.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna recall agenda item number thirty. XO Restaurant. Is there anyone appearing for agenda item number thirty? Ms. Ogata?
I think Ms. Lee is on, but she's still muted. Ms. Lee, are you there? I'm sorry, I tried to unmute her, but I don't hear anything.
Number thirty-three, hold on.
Okay, we'll recall agenda item thirty again, let's give her some time to unmute. Let's call, uh, recall agenda item number thirty-three, Taps and Apps.
Yeah, that's Overton. There you go.
Mr. Overton. Mr. Overton, you're muted.
Nope, not here.
Mr. Overton, can you hear us?
Technical difficulties.
Okay, let's, let's give him ten more seconds.
We can't. Yeah, we can't hear you, sir.
He's walking away.
Can see you, but you're very blurry. We can see you, but you're very blurry and we have no sound coming through.
He's gonna call in? Okay, Mr. Overton, we'll wait for you to call in.
There we go.
And it, yep.
Is that him?
Yep, I would be. Is it done?
Mr. Overton?
Hello, this is Taps and Apps, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah, we apologize, uh, we don't know what's going on with our laptop.
No problem, can you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Thank you, Chair and uh, liquor commission. Um, I'm Marie Overton, I'm here as my husband Randy, or John Overton. We're the owners of Taps and Apps LLC.
Thank you. Ms. Ogata.
Charge one, on or during the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five six of the Rules of Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge two, on or about January twenty, two thousand nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee purchased or acquired liquor from any person other than a wholesaler licensed pursuant to section two eighty-one dash thirty-one of the Hawaii Eerie Vice Statutes for purposes of resale and in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-one subsection T of the Hawaii Eerie Vice Statutes.
Mr. and Mrs. Overton, how would you like to plead as to charge one?
Charge one would be no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for charge one for agenda item thirty-three, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
And how would you like to plead as to charge two?
Uh, guilty.
Okay, motion to accept the plea for charge two.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the plea for charge two for agenda item thirty-three, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Uh, Ms. Ogata, what are your recommendations?
For charge one, this is a first violation, recommendation is five hundred dollars. And for charge two, it's also a first violation, recommendation is five hundred dollars for a total of one thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Overton, do you have any comment or explanation?
Yeah, the first charge on the gross liquor sales report in two thousand nineteen twenty, we changed our uh, session and summary sales reports. Um, I met with Stacy Yang during the audit and at that time we uh, discovered the, our liquor sales, we include the tax within the price, so if you order a bottle of beer for four dollars, the tax is inclusive. All the other items, whether it's food, retail, um, soda, it's charged separately. So we were not aware at that time, when we filed for that year, that we did not report the G E tax related to the liquor. So it resulted in an additional uh, fee of three hundred sixty-three dollars and I filed the amended return and uh, on, since.
Okay, thank you, and, and what about um, charge two, purchasing from someone other than a licensed wholesaler?
Yes, charge two, we had, um, unfortunately, it was a, a, a spending weekend and she took upon herself to uh, replenish some stock that was not delivered. And she has been recommended and no longer will suggest.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion to approve the recommended fines of five hundred dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two for a to- total of one thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge one and five hundred dollars for charge two with a total fine of one thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, the total fee imposed will be one thousand dollars, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, recalling agenda item number thirty, XO Restaurant. Ms. Lee?
Yes, can you see, see me?
Yes, can you um, speak louder or turn up your volume, please?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Hi, sorry, hi, good afternoon, my name is Judy Lee and I am a member of XO Restaurant.
Thank you, Ms. Ogata.
On or about July seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and July thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee purchased or acquired liquor from any person other than a wholesaler licensed to, licensed pursuant to section two eighty-one dash thirty-one of the Hawaii Eerie Vice Statutes for purposes of resale and in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-one subsection T of the Hawaii Eerie Vice Statutes.
Ms. Lee, how would you like to plead?
Yeah, I accept it.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the plea for agenda item number thirty, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Ogata, what is your recommendation?
This is a first violation of this type, recommendation is five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lee, any, you have any comment?
No.
Okay, uh, motion to ex, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, all those in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carried, the fee of five hundred dollars is imposed, thank you, Ms. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Ogata.
Okay, moving back on there to the regular um, agenda item number thirty-eight, liquor administrator, any legislative update?
Uh, nothing uh, further, other than what was published in the weekly report.
Thank you, Ms. Hori. Um, agenda item number thirty-nine, liquor administrator, any administrative matters?
You're muted, Mr. Pacaro.
Oh. Oh, am I here now?
Yep, we got you.
Something from me, uh, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I want to thank um, the liquor commission staff here, Douglas and everybody here who's pulled this off. This is our official in-person meeting, I think it went through very smoothly.
One man.
Um, other than the other technical difficulties, but we've been able to push through, so, having said that, meeting adjourned.